Give me the yay.
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Calling to order the virtual meeting of the city of Bel Air Beach, July 20th. It was scheduled for 6:00 PM. It's now 6:38 PM due to technical difficulties. Dave, thank you for fixing it up for us. Patty, thanks for getting it up. And we're now in under session. Let's rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Robin Aki.
Here.
Councilmember Marv Bean.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Councilmember Jody Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Rita Swob.
Here.
Vice Mayor Glenn Gunn.
Here.
Mayor Joseph Manzo.
Here.
And City Manager Lynn Reeves.
Here.
Okay, thank you. So we have one item on this agenda, and it was put on by the city manager. Discussion and review of the FY 2020-2021 budget. With that, I'll turn it over to Lynn Reeves.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is just a recap. We went through this last week. And really, at this point in time, what I'm looking for is any additional comments that you want to make or adjustments to the budget. So anyone that has any comments, please, please bring them forward.
Lynn, this is Marv. The things I'd like to add to the budget, if we can, is the HVAC vent wall that I talked about in the past. What this will do is allow that air conditioning system that the city will run cooler, and it'll save a lot of money on energy, and hopefully, they won't be running as hot, and that'll prevent a burnout that we had on one system about four years ago. In with that, I'd like to also mention the security system around the building. We've talked about it. I know there's money that's sitting in the side, but I'd like to move forward with that. And the other item is putting a gate up at the south end of the park by the city hall. And that mainly would, then we'd be able to lock that park up at sunset and give the people on Ninth a little peace of mind at night, and prevent people from going in there at night. I think it'd be a safety issue. Since we talked about not putting any cameras on the park, I think it'd be a good idea. So those are the three items that I like to move forward on.
Well, I can tell you that the louvers cost estimate that we got through Train was $23,000 as a round number. The security cameras, there's already 20,000 in there. And the gate on the, at the park, we do have a chain gate across there that we could implement that right now if we asked, just put it as an additional duty, as opposed to putting a, you know, spending a, an amount of money to put a fence-type gate up there. And we utilized that when the parks were closed during the shutdown, when everything was closed. So I don't know what the council's pleasure on that is, on the HVAC. The security, I think, is taken care of, and we've discussed that. And the gate, we do have, as I said, a chain across there. So what is the council's pleasure on that?
Lynn, are we just talking about louvers into a block wall? Is that what we're?
Yes.
To allow some ventilation?
Yes. The corral where all the air conditioning equipment is outside is open air. And what the quote was from Train was installation of four, four-by-six fixed louvers. And, you know, this is something that's been discussed. I can't tell you, you know, my experience. Marv would know more about it than me. I don't know if it's good, bad, or indifferent.
Jody, you want me to explain it to you? Here's what it is. Those units are sitting like in a bowl. That's the simplest explanation. And none of those units have what they call a velocity stack on them. So what's happening, the hot air velocity stack on those fans is like a, let's say the fan is round, and it's a round tube that would go up to the top of those walls. What that then would do is allow the cold air to be drawn in and the hot air to be drawn out, or pushed out over the top of the wall. What's happening now is the hot air is recirculating. Those fans aren't strong enough to push that hot air all the way up over those walls. So what's happening, the condensers are overheating, and the only way you can run those units is undercharge them. The other bad thing is you overheat your condensers and run the compressors longer, and they get hot. So this is what caused the failure about four years ago. So by putting the louvers in the wall, what you're going to do is draw air into the bottom, and that'll allow for more circulation.
Jody?
Right, so the, that sounds like about a $5,000 fix. I think maybe we're calling the wrong people. I'm not, I mean, I don't know. I don't, you know, maybe it's the cutting the concrete out. I'm not sure why. The louvers are very, very inexpensive, but they may have to put, you know, reinforce it as it's done. I'm just saying, it just seems, that seems very expensive, 23,000. I think it can be done a lot less expensive.
Yeah, what the issue is with this, this came from Train. That's who takes what our air conditioning system and heating is. And yes, there's some issues with the structural portion of the walls. So something would have to be done with that, and I'm sure that's why the cost is what it is. And this is just one cost. It may cost 18,000. I'm just saying, we got a price to look at that and to see what the, I guess I'll call it the worst-case scenario is. And I can't tell you that over the life of five years from now, if we'll get $5,000 a year back in, you know, energy savings or not, because that's, I'm not an expert on that.
Lynn, the only, the only thing that you're going to save is a, you know, as we had, we had one failure. Whether that was another scenario tied into the failure, but working with units like these for years, it's just a bad way of doing things that should have been put in the original design in the building. But it's something that was overlooked at the time. But if you see air conditioning systems on the top of the roof, or you see them in around any building, or cooling towers, if you're familiar with cooling towers, they're all ventilated, and that's the primary reason, is what I explained. It's let that air come in the bottom easily, and air go out the top. You need to draw in cool, as cool air as possible. And being, if the vents are put on the east side of the building, fine, the mornings are normally cooler than evenings. And as the sun travels west, you'd be drawing in cooler air from the east side.
Jody?
Can I recommend that we just put an extra couple of thousand dollars in there? And I think, I know we have a savings account for HVAC, Lynn, and my, and I would say, it sounds like, you know, we've maybe identified a problem, but I don't think it's up to us to decide how that should be fixed. You need a mechanical engineer to look at it. And so maybe use, put some money aside to get a mechanical engineer to tell us what needs to be done. Or call the mechanical engineer that did the original design and tell him his design's bad, and tell him to fix it. That's what I would do.
I agree.
So, I mean, I think that, you know, it's great that we have, we've identified it, but we need to know for sure, for certain, the fix. And that's up to an engineer to tell us.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'm a stationary engineer, or was 20 years ago, but since retired. But I didn't design them, but I installed them. So I know how the installation goes.
Yeah, the missing piece of the puzzle is, what's the cost benefit of this improvement? I mean, yeah, it's nice improvement, but what's the payback on it? $20,000, I mean, what's the payback? The cost?
Well, if it saves, if it saves one of the units from being replaced, your cost savings is extended out, let's put it that way, by not replacing a unit or multiple units in the next few years. Hopefully, it'll extend the life. And hopefully, the damage that was done to one that failed for various reasons, who knows? Maybe this will extend the life of them. That's all I can tell you.
Well, what's the expected lifespan on the unit? In a perfect world, with proper ventilation?
Proper ventilation, I've seen them, again, my most experience with failing units is in the Midwest, and they can run as far as 20 years, 30 years. In Florida, I know the life expectancy on a home unit is down to about 12. You know, I haven't had any experience with industrial units in Florida, so what I like to tell you is the experience I've had with cooling towers and ventilation and installing.
How old are they now?
It would be 10 years.
10 years old.
So if they're only supposed to last two more years, maybe, maybe five. You've got to look at it that, too. Because would it be better just to hold off and put the money into a new unit once it's needed? I don't know, I'm just asking.
And that's what we've got, the savings accounts that we do in the capital projects fund. We save that money to alleviate the, you know, large-dollar expense in a single year. So we're building up an amount of money up to replace those.
You know what, Lynn? To put this thing to bed and go on with the rest of it is just call an engineer up, get an opinion, and let that be the guidelines and go forward.
Okay, okay. We can do that.
Lynn, I'd like to, you and I've had some discussion on this, but everyone else obviously has not with us. So this whole issue with the beach easements and access points and enforcement, the basic idea is that the police pretty much, you know, are doing what they can, I guess, at this point with the individual that we have patrolling both cities. That's obviously not adequate. And I know, Lynn, you've been out there looking, and things have been temporarily better, but they get temporarily better, they get temporarily worse. It's been going on ever since I've been here, and I think it's been going on before that. So the question is, is what are we going to put aside as a contingency to address this issue? I realize that tomorrow, you know, you're going to be going over to Bel Air Shore discussing this some more, but, you know, I think something has to be done other than just us saying, you know, yeah, we're going to deal with it, or, you know, we're going to ask the police to step it up, because I think the police have stepped up as much as they can. So if this means that we have to put some temporary security on, then that's what it means. If it means we have to hire an officer, so be it. And then there's bigger things like gates and card control and stuff like that. But I don't think we can continue to ignore it. It's obviously creating a rift between the two cities, and it's going to end badly, no matter how we do it, if we don't address it. So that's my point. How much you want to put at it and what you propose, I don't know, but I don't know that there's anything in on that.
No, there isn't anything in there at this point. I don't think we, you know, from a fiscal standpoint, we want to pay for a deputy for $48 an hour to basically check ID cards, if that's what you're wanting to do. And I think that has to be discussed further with Bel Air Shore also. So, you know, we could set some money in this budget, or we could, once everything's resolved, we could amend it at a point in time that we feel comfortable and both cities are agree that this is the process that we go forward with. So any other feedback on that?
And I'm not proposing that we use police officers. I mean, but obviously, even if you had a security, you know, part-time security there, and it's, you know, again, we've talked about this, it's weekends and holidays, but you still need police ultimately to respond, because security can't, you know, they can't, they have no law enforcement power. So we need something, and again, I just don't think, you know, I think we're ignoring this at our own peril, and there's just several things at play over here. You know, I don't even think we get to this umbrella ban if we had been patrolling those things a little bit better. And it is our responsibility under this interlocal. We're the ones who took on the responsibility of security. So I don't want to say we're in breach of the contract, I won't go so far, but, I mean, we could do better. I just will say that. And let's, you know, I just want to make sure that we, I mean, I don't care if we amend it after you speak with them tomorrow night, if we have more discussions, but if it's not resolved by September, I just, we're going to need money, and it should be resolved by September, because we've been talking about it since May, so.
Right, I would, I would suggest that if, after the further discussion with Bel Air Shore, if we need to add some money to the budget, then I think I would just do that at the, you know, let everyone know from the budget workshop, and we'll go out and kind of figure out, okay, do we want someone there on? And that's really up to the city council. Is the city council saying they want someone there on every weekend, Saturday and Sunday? Are they wanting, you know, sporadic? Are you wanting it year-round? That's a question that we need to resolve also.
I think you need an overarching strategy on this. I mean, one of the biggest issues right now that you can really put your finger on and that you see is cost containment of the legal fees that are, that this thing's starting to generate.
Right, and?
And it also goes to that contract review. You handed out that thing with the contract review, and you went down the line there. And there were several line items in there that said, hey, we need to review these contracts. And there's one that's ready for an RFP, but, you know, you threw it out there, nobody reacted, and we don't have a next step, or we haven't identified what the action item is out of that. One of those things was legal.
Right.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I meant, this is Councilmember Swob. I'm going to agree on the legal. I mean, our attorney fees are, it's just getting absolutely incredibly high. I mean, we were at 6,500 for the month of June, and we all know July's going to even be more with, you know, seven-and-a-half-hour meetings and stuff, as well as our videographer that's there for those, that amount of time. So what do we have in the budget for legal and for the video videographer?
The video person, we have $8,000. Because we didn't have a couple meetings, you know, that, there's some savings there. But as far as the city attorney through June, we've expended the budget that we set up, which was 35,000. And mainly, that, a lot of that money, unfortunately, you know, it was between public records and this, that, and the other, back and forth. There was a little bit of additional expense with the charter review, back and forth to get those things done. So if this continues, if the trend continues, we're going to have to even add more money to this budget.
Jody?
I guess no one's monitoring the raise-your-hand on.
No, I did, I said Jody, didn't you hear me?
Oh, I know, I raised my hand, but I didn't know if anyone else was.
Oh, I'm seeing it, yeah.
Electronic raise-your-hand. So I, we've kind of jumped into another subject, but back to the beach and Bel Air Shores. I know when we talked about, Lynn, when you and I talked about the Buck Boulevard beautification, it seems like that that would be a time, we're going to have to amend the budget to tackle that, which would then, of course, because that does tie with Bel Air Shores, would be the time to allot any funds that might need to be allotted for whatever the resolution is with Bel Air Shores. I don't want to go into a whole lot of discussion about that, but whatever it is. So that would be my comment with regards to allowing some funds for something there. And then, then back to the legal fees, I agree, we need to, I have to tell you, I looked in detail at that last invoice we received. I'm not sure how my name got on there, because I am so, I never reach out to our attorney. I think I sent Lynn and Patty an email about beach cleanup, and somehow, the attorney reviewed the email. I don't know why the attorney would need to review my email about having beach cleanup. I don't, I don't even know why he's seeing that. That was a question to Lynn, should have never gone to the attorney. There are a lot of conversations between council members and the attorney. I just don't, I, my personal opinion is, we shouldn't be reaching out to the attorney unless there's a dire something. And I think that those communications should go through Lynn to control costs. Just my thought. And I'll leave it at that.
Lynn?
Yeah, two things. One is, and it goes to the sheriff's line item in this thing. We've got a worksheet that was provided for fiscal year '21, and I discussed it a little bit with Lynn Reeves, and it kind of goes to what changes are there? I'm not sure we understand everything. I asked Lynn Reeves if he might reach out to some of the other municipalities and maybe benchmark some of these costs, and try to understand whether or not there's some differences and why there might be some differences. Along the lines of these, the cost containment for legal fees, one of the aspects of this thing is, I think there are ex parte conversations going on with the city attorney that need to stop. Discussions and strategy needs to be discussed in a council setting before the city attorney gets tasked with any kind of actionable item. That the problem with that is, if the strategy changes, we're doing a renewed work effort, and that's bringing up additional legal costs, and also, strategies are being set and then without discussion, without the advice and consent of the entire council. So my proposal here is that any and all discussions with the city attorney are either in the council chambers with all council members present, or they are filtered through the city manager, and he kind of takes a lead on it. That's, number one, that's a professional courtesy to have the city manager in the loop on this thing. And also, the precedent, we had a council member get spanked for this very thing of having an ex parte conversation with the city attorney and coming up with a resolution or whatever, and that's not the way business is supposed to be done. You have a meeting with the council, you come up with a strategy, you task the city attorney. Everybody is in the loop, so.
Glenn, do you mind if I add something to that last comment? I know that you're referring to my resolution. However, my resolution was handed over to Patty and Lynn, and then they decided to bring the attorney in, because they were not aware of how to handle this particular situation. So I don't want you to think, or go under the false pretense that that's what happened, that I was undermining the council. I actually went to Patty and Lynn and never once said, I need the attorney to do something. So just to clear the record.
No, I didn't bring that up in the pejorative sense. And, you know, the issue was, there was some business conducted without the full knowledge of the council. And there are discussions now, and I will be specific now. There are conversations between the mayor and the city attorney that are taking place. Resolutions are being developed, and then they're being slapped in front of the council without discussion and a full exploration of all the different alternatives and options. And I think that needs to stop. That's one of the ways we start containing the cost for the city attorney.
Well, let me speak to that. When the contract for the city attorney was executed, if you bother to read it, you'll find that I have absolutely every right to speak directly to the city attorney. I don't have to go through the city manager or anyone else. As mayor, sometimes I'm privy to stuff that other people aren't. It's just the way it goes. And sometimes you're privy to things that I'm not privy to. So I have a reason sometimes for speaking with him. In terms of setting policy, I've set no policy with him. Sometimes I discuss stuff with him. Being an attorney, I'm able to discuss it attorney-to-attorney, which is a benefit that no one else has. And he enjoys those conversations. I notice that he doesn't always bill for the full amount of those conversations, and I do think they're productive. I'm not wasting his time. I don't go to him for routine matters. I only go to him when there's something that affects the city, or something that really has to be kept confidential. It's not always practical or actually advisable for me to include anyone else, and I'm not going to go through anyone else. I had an issue that concerned Lynn Reeves directly, and I'm not going to even say what it was. I definitely didn't want to go through him, given the situation. And thankfully, it was resolved in the positive, and it was resolved by the city attorney. It never came before this council. It's not something that had to come before this council, at least in the city attorney's opinion. So sometimes that stuff comes up. There's not routine conversations that are going on. In terms of his dollars that are being spent, we could spend it better. Okay, if you're going to sit a city attorney in for seven hours on a council meeting, that's our fault. Okay, he didn't have to be here. He wasn't given advice during all that time. If you're going to sit a city attorney in and discuss a $200 bill by people that was submitted and spend $150 of his time while he doesn't give a concrete yes-or-no decision, you're going to spend legal time. One of the, I like the city attorney, but one of the problems I'm seeing is that we can't get a straight answer. Okay, it happened just the last conversation. I got you next, Dave. And I think Dave Gaddis asked three times to have something explained by the city attorney that I had brought up, a legal issue, and he didn't, I don't know if he still got his right answer. We're spending money for all of that stuff, and we see that back and forth constantly. Sometimes you can't just sit on the fence, sometimes you've got to make a decision. And I see a lot of this sitting on the fence, waste a lot of legal fees, okay? And so I think stuff can be cut down. Also, keep in mind, this year, we had charter review, which we had him sitting in on, which was, you know, he was in on several different events for that. It took like how many times to get the charter review stuff? I still don't think we had it complete. I mean, some of this stuff, to me, is just not good workmanship, you know? And I'll go out in the lead and say that. That charter review stuff should have been drafted once, and if it was drafted multiple times, that's not our fault, okay? That, we didn't change our minds. So I do think we could do better. As for the public records request, shame on the person who made that thing. That wasted thousands and thousands of dollars of city money unnecessarily, and so be it. You know, it is what it is. If people are going to do that, you're going to spend legal money. So I think we could do a better job of cost containment. I don't know that it's going to get down as low as probably everybody wants it to be. Dave?
Oh, if memory serves me correctly, I believe whenever we went through the interview process of the three attorneys and attorney firms that applied to become our city attorney, it seems to me that Fred's was the most inexpensive, but it was purely an hourly rate. And I think that upfront, we were possibly going to pay more for other probably higher, more highly qualified attorneys and firms upfront. But now I'm beginning to wonder if we're really getting the best bang for buck doing this hourly rate, whereas someone who's a little better-versed with our type of community, and especially a beach community, would have an answer much quicker, and it would be far more precise. Again, I have no grievances with Fred Riley, but at some time, we're going to be paying a premium budget for an attorney that we could have already had for much cheaper. Does that make sense?
Robin, and then Glenn.
No, Dave, what you're saying makes sense, but, you know, when I look back on the other attorneys, you know, they brought their big gun, you know, guys that had their name on the law firm, but they were going to give us like the junior partner who didn't have any experience. So you might have been paying more money for less experience. At least he had cheaper rates, and he has experience with another city, which is, you know, why he got my vote, because I thought he was the cheapest and the most experienced, as opposed to a new attorney that's getting their feet wet. And I don't want to be the city that they get their feet wet on. So, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if he's supposed to give a straightforward answer. I think that last meeting, the potential future legal issues, to me, I would think as an attorney, you don't want to concretely say something, because then you may get stuck in that role if something comes up down the road. So maybe he was trying to be vague for that, I don't know. Again, I'm not an attorney, but so far, I think that a lot of them that a lot of the money was spent on that records request. So hopefully that's in the past and we won't have to have any more of those big records requests and then we can move forward and hopefully we will not have another seven hour meeting. And that's it.
Glenn?
Uh, number uh one, the uh Lynn provided his uh review of the contract and city attorney is on that for review. And it's one of those things where I think everybody is, has some uh questions in the back of their, their mind. To address uh Robin's uh issue with expertise, that the, the benefit of, of some of these larger law firms is that, yeah, they may send a guy with the least amount of experience, but when there's a question or an issue that he's not that familiar with, he goes back to the office and he has a, a ready resource and he can talk to his uh, his fellow uh attorneys in the, in the office. Uh, that Fred, I don't think has that depth uh of expertise that, that he can lean on. Uh, I think, and that's starting to surface maybe in this beach issue. I think we're starting to rack up them, some uh, some attorney fees in this as he, as he obviously educates himself on the issues and that sort of thing. But at some point, I, I think there's going to be some questions that we may want to just go straight to an expert on, somebody who's familiar with these issues, has a lot of background. And in the long run, it saves us money. It may seem expensive upfront, but you're going to get an answer uh, uh much quicker and with a lot more reliability and level of confidence than uh keep revisiting and negotiating this thing. It's a, it's kind of a fundamental difference in uh philosophy here. I know we want to go negotiate this thing with Bel Air Shore and then see what needs to be done next. My feeling and uh my experience has always been you walk into a negotiation knowing a lot of the answers to the questions that are going to be asked. You don't go in and find out what the questions are and then go research them. I mean, it's better to walk in loaded for bear and understand what the issues are and uh what, what, what resources and, and what the case law is already out there. So, that's all I have.
But just to add something that Glenn said with, I, I saw it with this beach stuff. And again, I'm not trying to knock Fred. He and I have spoken a little bit and I, and it, to me as an attorney, sixty, seventy percent of your worth is anticipation and issue spotting. And I don't know that that's happening all the time. I could give you three is instances on the last meeting where it didn't happen. I spotted him, he didn't spot him. I'm not your attorney and I'm not going to give legal advice and I don't know that the legal advice is appreciated anyway, so I'm not going to give it. Um, he asked me to help him review all the laws. I'm not doing it. Okay, that's not my responsibility. This council can review the laws. I'm not negotiating anything with across the street, although I intend to speak as a citizen. I have my rights and I'm intent to pers- to uh protect my rights. But, you know, it hit home with this issue with this signage, um that uh, the attorney who came to us, Mr. A. He uh, Lynn, uh Lynn got the uh information, sent it to me and Fred said, um, well, the man was nice. He gave me a ca- he's going to send me to case law. And I said, I'll tell you the case law. I'll tell it to you right off the top of my head. And I told him the case. That was the overriding US Supreme Court case. Um, you know, this is not news. This is not news at all. This thing came out four years ago and it was a big issue. So, you know, why we're researching that and why we're doing that, I mean, I wouldn't even charge for that legal research if it was my firm, because I, I just feel it's something you should know. And we are doing that and to Glenn's point, he's right. Okay, we're doing this with this beach thing. Now, this is a complicated issue. Um, with who, you know, where the sand lies and all this stuff. It's complicated, but um that's why I'm encouraging us not, not to get into litigation, because this is an expensive venue to, to start researching and I don't know if he's the right person for that, quite frankly. So, um, you know, I think we could better spend our money. Maybe we do have to bring in a specialist if we get embroiled in litigation, of which I think there's two or three things pending right now. It's uh, it's something that, you know, we're just going to have to watch, but I, as I recall to Robin Aki's point, um, as I remember when we reviewed these, and don't hold me to it, I think the big firms gave you a set amount of hours. I think even Paul Marino did that with us in the past and he had a, a flat fee and that covered you for a certain amount of average time. But if you started to exceed that, you still had to pay extra. So I think we'd be exceeding it under probably anyone's contract and probably paying some overages. Lynn might be more familiar with the particulars of that contract, but I think that's the way it worked.
Yeah, usually they give you a, a base, but uh the, the typically in the, in a lot of these contracts, that base gives you, I'll call it generalized legal advice, but uh, and I, and I could pull those RFQs out and just kind of give you some update on them, because I know it's been, what, 12 months ago? But what I recollect, those firms did offer us a flat fee for basic and then if it was additional items that we had to pay for that was outside of that scope, uh, there was an additional charge. But I can pull those out if the council wants me to.
Counsel?
City manager Lynn Reeves, I'm good with you pulling it out. We need to get a stronger attorney that can, in my opinion, that can uh be our attorney. So we don't, you know, ni- nobody on this quorum and in this city council should be given legal advice at all. So we need an attorney that can do that for us as a whole, for the whole city versus uh, you know, conferencing with another attorney of any kind as far as one on the city council, because I disagree with Mayor Manzo giving talking to our city attorney is attorney to attorney, because you're not representing the city as an attorney and we all know that. So I think we need to get a stronger attorney.
I'm not counseling with him as the city's attorney. I'm counseling with him as mayor and it's within the contract parameters. I wrote the contract and you all approved it, so. And I shouldn't have had to write it, by the way. But don't worry, folks. I'm not going to be doing too much legal for you. Um, you know, it's, again, it's, I'm not the city's attorney, so I kind of expect him to step up and issue spot and do what he's supposed to do. But I know, check my attorney license at the door. Um, and I do have a responsibility to the city. The city, not to each of you, not to any of you, but to the city to make sure that the city doesn't get itself embroiled in lawsuits. So if I see something wrong, I'm going to say it. Because I would not be acting as an attorney if I didn't. Um, I'm not your attorney. I'm a, an op- obviously an expert in the law. And so if I see something that's wrong, I'm going to say it. And, um, but he's not going to be working with me on anything. It's that simple. Yes, Jody?
Yeah, Mayor, I, you know, and I appreciate your um candidness of, you know, having the ability and the knowledge, but we don't want to put you in the shoes that you have to, we have to rely on you. We have a city attorney for that, right? So it's, it's not fair to you. And it puts you at some, I mean, it puts you in kind of a liability situation, which isn't right either. I mean, I wouldn't want to be in your shoes. So I'm just saying, I, you know, and all due respect to you, I think.
No, thank you.
To Rita's point, I think it's, makes sense that we make sure that there's someone stronger that hopefully doesn't have to call you for advice. I, I did. That's kind of not a good position to be in, so.
And, and I shouldn't have to really, you know, and I've done this in the past and I'm just not going to be doing it much. I, I shouldn't be, be, you know, I, I took him to task. Glenn Gunn wrote this, and I'll say it because I did discuss this with Fred. He wrote a proposal for um, for some um control on uh records requests. And I asked during our work session, I said, what's the legal authority? I asked Lynn to get me a memo on the legal authority. Well, I haven't gotten it and I'm not going to get it, because I know why I'm not going to get it, because there is no legal authority for it. And I had that discussion with him afterwards and basically the, the feeling was is that, well, you know, I kind of put it through to get to a discussion. I'm like, Fred, this is my opinion, but don't put something through that doesn't have legal basis, because then you put me in the position of saying, wait a minute. You can't do this. Okay? That thing was against the US Constitution, the state constitution and the state statute. Don't get me even going. I said, don't you dare bring that up to the council, because if you bring it in the condition that it's in, I have no choice but to shoot it down. I'd look like an idiot if I don't. But Jody, thank you for your concern. I shouldn't have to be the one doing that, because you know what? There's other mayors who are, you know, from all walks of life. One's an ex-cop, one's a hairdresser, one's a business person. What if I was an accountant from the good old days? I, I shouldn't have to be doing this and I, I really don't want to do it. So I'm not the city's attorney and I'm going to step away more and more from even giving legal advice, but I've never been the attorney to Councilman Swope's point, um, and I never will be. Okay, so just so you know. Thank you, Jody, though, for your concern. Dave?
Uh, yes, I would uh, I would uh like to ask the council to uh, let's just go ahead and do a yearly review on our attorney and decide if this is the direction we want to go, continue go uh moving, or do we want to uh begin interviews again for a replacement? Personally, I would prefer to have an attorney that uh is not uh basically his opinion is not left open for interpretation. I would like clear and concise answers. I would also uh like to have an attorney that, that cannot be pushed around uh by the council. Uh, I think that basically we should respect that attorney and um listen to what he has to say and we don't second guess him. Uh, it's, it's, you know, obviously people are going to have different differentiating opinions, but I believe it happens too often with Fred. And um I, I think especially uh with what's happened uh in recent meetings, I think that it would be in the city's best interest to uh move over to a, a different attorney.
I, I think maybe this is a subject for a, I mean, we, we supposed to, you know, one of the things we kind of faulted, um, you know, not last council, but ones that went many, many times before that, was in 22 years, never reviewing the attorney's contract. And I think we said that every year we were going to take a look at it. Well, it's that year. So um, if we want to set up for a work session and maybe get, you know, explore this a little bit fuller, I, I think that's what we're supposed to be doing. We're really supposed to be looking at all contracts every year. Um, I had asked Lynn to prepare that list and he did and thank you. And um, I'm, I'm fine with, let's have that discussion. Maybe we have a, a work session in August and decided, I think that's about the year's anniversary. And uh, if, if we collectively decide that um he's good, wonderful, can get, gets another year. And if he's not doing what we expect, then it's up to us to make changes or make suggestions and make a shift if we have to.
We're good. Marv?
I agree with that. I think it's something that the council intended to do anyways, to review all contracts. We just ought to probably get in depth and see where the city's going. I will say this, um, you know, there's things that have propped up over the last year we never expected. So there was a lot of unexpected stuff that came up and I think we need to consider that. But on another note, I'd like to make mention um putting in the budget a possible another employee in public works. Um, you know, we've heard about Lynn doing things on the weekend and uh I don't think it's fair to him. If we had any other city manager, um, you know, we'd be paying for another employee to come in on weekends and empty garbage cans and do the work that he's been doing. He pitches in like one of the guys. But I don't think it's fair to him and I don't think it's, it's fair to us, really. We need to really address it and look forward. If we need another employee or a part-time employee, let's put it on the budget. Take a good look at that. What's your view on it?
Jody?
I had this conversation with Lynn earlier and we're uh talking about the um code enforcement officer that we're using the sheriff and we've got a budget of $40,000 for that position and getting a sheriff 12 hours a week. Um, I think that money would be better spent with a code enforcement officer. And maybe, you know, Lynn, Lynn had proposed maybe doing more of an in-house, trying to work with the staff he currently has, but you know, to your point, Marv, I don't like to hear that he's out emptying trashcans on the weekend. So so, you know, I don't know how, what that looks like, but my point is we've got $40,000 sitting there. You could pay a, another staff member, get our code enforcement brought back in-house and have maybe some extra hands to do those weekend duties that need to be taken care of. So, just, just a thought.
Marv?
Jody, I'll agree with you. Maybe it could be a combination code enforcement, um, public works person to do double duty in that regard and take the load off uh when it's needed and uh maybe that would help things flow a little better and, and take Lynn out of that picture totally and give him time to do other things. That's, that's my thought.
Lynn, this is Councilmember Swope. Can you um give us your opinion on it? What do you think?
Well, you know, I, I thank everyone for the thought of taking me out of it. You know, it, it's not like I mind it. And I think I've got a staff here right now. Uh, and, and I do propose bringing the code enforcement back inside. Uh, I think the value that we're paying uh is not there. It, you know, it's $48 an hour for the code enforcement officer from the sheriff. Uh, I think that uh we could utilize that money and possibly get a, a part-time person. My thought uh is to take uh Laura's doing the administration, take her and put her out on the street e- early every day uh in that timeframe and then occasionally on the weekends, you know, and that's what we're doing with the current code enforcement. You know, he's coming in one weekend day a month. And then do some additional training with the public work staff and kind of get them up to date. So in essence, what we'll eventually have is uh myself, the code enforcement person and three other people looking around also. And then, you know, if we want to leave this money in the budget, uh, then we could look at trying to find a, a part-time person to do a, a mixture. Maybe, maybe they do the trash and drive around the city, you know, on the weekends uh or, or some other situation. But uh, I think that potentially could work. Uh, I've had a meeting with the staff members uh and thrown this idea out to them. Uh, and everyone was uh committed to the situation. So I, I think that's a good thing. It says a positive thing for the staff. That, that they're, you know, they're invested also.
Lynn, um, first of all, thank you for uh what you do on the weekends. You and I have had discussions on that and I, I just really think it's terrific that, you know, sometimes you'll take out of your personal time to go track down a code violation and um, that's great. Okay, that is absolutely great. So you and I've had this discussion, I'll just share it with everyone else, is that basically, you know, the gremlins seem to come out on the weekend with the trouble and that is to me when we have to put our efforts in for code enforcement, easement enforcement, you name it. So maybe there is something. I told Lynn last week I would entertain this idea and I do. Um, I, I, I think there may be some merit to this. So I would like to see some proposals from you as to how you would do it. But I think for me to support it, it's going to have to have a nice component of enforcement on the weekends. To just say one, like we used to do one weekend a month, I think with Laura when she was doing it or maybe the prior code. And that's just not enough. It, it's got to be maybe one weekend off a month, but it's got to be, we've got to really hit those weekends, because that's when they're building the houses without permits and doing the movings and you name it. That's when all the fun stuff is going on, because they know we're not watching.
Well, we, we're currently, Danny, the current code enforcement person is coming in one weekend a month currently. I haven't seen his report from the last, because he was just here over this weekend, but uh occasionally he'll find one or two. But I think we can do that. I've got one of the s- public work staff also coming in. They work a new shift now, Sunday through Fri- Thursday, Sunday through Friday. That'd be a heck of a shift. No, Sunday through Thursday. So, you know, I think doing something like that and, and trying to find another person to help fill in, I think uh that will work. Laura's doing the administration already, so anything Danny brings forward that needs to have a letter or do any of that stuff, uh Laura's already doing it. And I, I, like I said, I think the staff as a total is committed to doing whatever we need to do going forward, but so I, I think we can accomplish this. It'll be, I guess, how I look at it. We had a trial period with the sheriff this year and I think we can have a trial period doing it another way and move forward.
Marv, you're next. I just had a quick question for Lynn. Lynn, are we under contract on that code enforcement? Lynn, are we under contract on that code enforcement? Do we have to re, is a contract going to renew?
It, it, it's a separate from the sheriff. So we would have a, we would have to, I'd bring it to you to renew it.
So we have to make a decision by September, then?
Yeah, well, I'm going to bring you the sheriff's contract at the next meeting. Or we could renew it and use as least hours as we want to. That's another option.
Can we go month to month? Well, I mean, it seems like we have to have a discussion here of a couple of things. So we might as well maybe do an August work session or something. I don't think there's any other meetings in August other than our regular council meeting. But I'm guessing, you know, this is not a topic for a regular council meeting. But maybe we do it, you know, and get that answer to you. But so you could have it maybe for August and by the end of August, if that helps. If you can, you can prepare the actual information and your proposals.
Yeah, I, I can, you know, right now, you know, if we leave the money in the budget, then we can always adjust and move it where we need to move it within the, the general fund budget. So the money wouldn't go away, we'll just use it accordingly.
Repurpose it. Marv?
Yeah, two things. One, the city staff, Lynn has done a great job on reorganizing it, and everything is working well. And by putting another person on and helping them out and having that teamwork together, I think it'd be a great idea. The next thing is, I know Lynn and I have had a conversation with where are the police in the city? And I know they all have a GPS on the car. When we had our own officers, there were two in the city. One left occasionally to take someone to jail or do other duties. But they never left. So the issues that we're having with the beach access were almost non-existent when we had our own police department. But that's never going to return. And I think there should be conversation between both cities so that Bel Air Shore can up their part of the contract, and we can maybe, maybe not up it, but say, hey, guys, you're, you know, how many hours are you really spending in the city? Where are you? And kind of keep a handle on that. I don't know how it would be done. I know there's resistance on using the GPS locating. But I think all of us can agree that you very seldom see them roaming around, even on the weekends. Yes, they roam around, but then where do they go the rest of the time? I mean, there's 12 hours are supposed to be strictly in the city. But that's the issue, or between both cities. So where the heck are they? That's all I have to say about the contract coming up. I don't know how we could do anything else and what the contract, what the sheriff puts out. But I, I, I would hope to think that there'd be something we could do to make sure they're in the city more than what they are.
And last year, I reached out to Clearwater. I'm not going to do that this year. I think that's something that if it's going to be done, it should come through you at this point. But, you know, there's new management up there, there's a new mayor up there. Last year, their response was no, they're the only other in law enforcement agency that could possibly handle our city at this point in time. But, you know, I'm just wondering, just for due diligence. I mean, every year, you know, the sheriff's going up, we've, we've heard complaints. We had a resident come forward last month objecting to the 400-plus thousand that we're spending on police. To Marv's point, I mean, I, I sit in front of my window all day. I'm not looking out of all day, but I am working. And sometimes I don't see a car, a car go by for hours and hours on end. And knowing from experience, it takes about two hours to drive the entire city if you're driving slowly. I should be seeing a car every couple of hours, and we're not seeing it. And it's not that they're on calls because, you know, thankfully, month to month, we've had very low, if, if any, crime. So I don't know where they are. Maybe they're doing something or investigating, or I don't know. But there's a perception issue here, and it's not the first person I've heard it from. We have speeding, we have, you know, other issues that are going on. And, and I guess there's other, you know, there's concerns. So I don't know that we have an alternative, but maybe we should at least look for it, number one. And then number two is, you know, is there a better way we can get better value for our money? I don't know if there's an answer to that either.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Clearwater, but I, I'm guessing they're going to tell us the same thing.
I'm guessing you're right.
Because, because they've been reached out too many times in the past. And they, they've always said, you know, we don't want anything to do with that. But that's, that's, you know, I think a lot of times we, we get, you know, the sheriff's contract went up about 2.6% this year. It's 503,000. And there's a lot of benefits that we get with the sheriff as far as, you know, if there's backups or things that we need, you know, there, there's deputies surrounding us. So i- if something would happen, that's a benefit. So at, at this point, you know, I, we've got two new deputies that are coming on into our city. Started, they just started Friday. Well, one started Friday, another one started to, today. No, both of them started Friday. So that's been a problem with the sheriff. They've had a lot of shuffling with all this closure and beach stuff and things of that nature. So I'm hoping that this six-month window, we're keeping Lydia and Officer Monado, Maltonado. Got to get it out of there. He, he's, he's staying, and Lydia's staying. And then we've got Oliver Little that's coming in on nights. And Ernest, blanking his last name, is coming in on the day shift. We're, over the last few months, Ernest Fielden. And I, I did speak with Captain Liner and voiced these concerns that, that some of you are talking about. You know, I want to know where they're at, too. And, you know, why, why aren't these things getting enforced? And, you know, if, if you want to give them a warning the first time, give them a warning, but put a piece of paper on their windshield or something. Because, because I think that's a lot of the problem that people are saying, no, they didn't do anything. They just drove through the parking lot and didn't do anything to them. Or, you know, they drove through the neighborhood, didn't, you know, I, I think our community is more in tune to the fact that we have an officer that communicates with us. And I did speak to the new day officer, and I will be speaking to the new night officer also. You need to, you know, be a community police officer and, and speak to people when you see them. Don't just drive by and going down the street because that's not what our community's about. And fortunately, over the years, we've had a lot of those officers that have, have been that way. And I relayed that also to Captain Liner on Friday. So we'll, we'll see what happens over the next 30 days with the new officers.
Dave?
Have we relayed clear directives to Pinellas County about what it is exactly we're looking for?
Yes. Yeah, we, we've had those meetings, and I know it seems like sometimes they, it doesn't click. And I will say, over the last four or five months with all this closure and non-closure, the deputies we used to have, they left for whatever reason. And I don't think we were getting what I consider, I'll call a quality deputy. And I think that hurt us in some respects. So, you know, all of that was brought up with Captain Liner and also the patrol captain, Nicholas Sarris. You know, because I'll give you an example. I, I questioned where a deputy was over Fourth of July during the daytime because I was out two or three times every day. And, you know, he does have, they do have GPS on them. But I, the thing that concerns me is if they see you out in your yard or walking down the street, they're not acknowledging you. And I think that's an important part of what our residents are looking for. And, and I relayed that to Captain Liner again on Friday.
Glenn?
Yes.
Glenn? You know, coming from the military, you always had standing orders and protocol. And when, when we've discussed these sorts of things with the sheriff's office, we've gotten pushback, you know, hey, they want to come on watch and, and basically have a, a free rein on, on how they patrol and conduct their, their, their watch. And, and they kind of resist any, they, they resist directed patrols. They don't, they don't like that sort of thing, I guess. But I think at some point, we need to be a little more prescriptive about, you know, what our level of expectation is. And Lynn and I have talked about delivery of services. And, and a, a follow-on is in all of these areas, code enforcement, trash, that kind of stuff, is what is the level of service that is expected by our residents? And what is the level of service to be provided by the city at a reasonable cost? And again, aligning those, those expectations. So I, I, I've always kind of felt like we need to be a little more prescriptive in where we want them to patrol, how often we want them to drive by a certain location, you know, that sort of thing. That's, that's all I can say on that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have any other comments on the budget? I, council, we do, I noticed there's Bill Lusk and a person named Alex here as citizens. We normally, this, we're not making a decision, so we're not required to hear from citizens. But we've traditionally always opened up the floor to citizens. So I will ask if no one has any objection, if the citizens have anything they'd like to discuss or bring to our, our attention, I'd like to open it up to their, to the floor for them. Anybody have an objection to that? There being none, then Patty, we have Bill Lusk and Alex. I don't know if they wish to comment, but if they can raise their hand electronically, if they wish to speak.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, no other comments? Okay, I think Lynn, then there's a few items, but overall, it looks like the budget's in pretty good shape here. A few items to bring to our attention. I guess that'll come up to our attention for the next council meeting you pass it out at.
Yeah, what, what I'll do, this is our proposed budget. If we, we'll clarify the 40,000 in code enforcement, that's one thing. The, we may add a, a few thousand dollars to get engineer to look at the mechanical thing, as Jody suggested. But everything, oh, and a few thousand dollars we'll put in there is a placeholder, whether we use it or not, for the possibility of having someone as a security screener, we'll call it. But if we don't use the money, then it'll stay and it won't go anywhere else. So I'll just put a, you know, 10,000 initially in there for that. And if we have to shuffle money, we'll shuffle it at that point in time. But so what that would do, yeah, it'd probably raise the reserve amount in a round number, it would probably be somewhere around 280,000, and I'll adjust it to that point that we would have to take from the reserves based on the, the items that we discussed. So at this point, we'll, we'll adjust those and add them into the appropriate department, and then go from there with that. And then I'll send you out a, another clean copy.
Very well, thank you. And you're also going to speak to Clearwater, good luck with that. Actually, they were very nice last year, they just weren't interested. So who knows, maybe it's changed, we'll see. You know, they don't have the revenues that they had last year. You might get a different response, we'll see.
I don't think anybody has the revenues they had.
There you go. So, you know, that can be a game changer. Folks, if there's nothing else, then we'll adjourn this meeting and start the next one. Do we have a motion to, I'm sorry, Jody?
I did have one other item that I had mentioned to Lynn, and I, I know we beat this to death before, but just revisiting the marina rates and/or maybe looking at a utility fee for the marina because we're spending $7,500 a year on utilities out there. You know, I know, being a boater, it's, they're pretty good rates that we're offering to both residents and non-residents. And just another potential, maybe, way to have a little bit of revenue bump in that department. Anyone have any feeling on that? Any feedback on such a thing? I, I, and I'll just tell you, I took that divided by the 19 slips we have, and it would, to break even, it would be $32 a month. I'm just saying, like, could we propose like a $20 a month utility fee and keep the rates as they are?
Dave?
Um, I had a question about that. I'm, I'm looking at the, the number of slips. I see 19. Out of that, how many, Lynn, how many are actually residents of Bel Air Beach versus outside?
There is a list in your budget. I'm try, I'm going to look for the page real quick.
Page 67.
See, you beat me to it, Jody.
Okay, all right, so I'm seeing here, that's the page I was actually looking at. All right, so that, that makes sense. Non-resident, there's not a lot of non-residents. But, you know, it's, it, it would make sense that if you did not live here, you should be charged for.
Yeah, well, and, and they are. But, and, and this kind of ebbs, ebbs and flows with the tide because, you know, at times, there's been more non-residents there than residents. And it's just the, the, the situation now, it appears there's more property owners than non-residents.
I'm not a boater, but I'm, I'm with Jody on this. I mean, I think whatever the market will bear on that, it's a great marina. You're, you're at your boat in about 30 seconds from the parking lot. I know we don't have other facilities and stuff like that. But whatever that's worth on the fair market and maybe a little, a little premium, because let's face it, you're parking your car in Bel Air Beach, it's a nice place. Hell, you could even park your car there and go across the street and swim in the water. There's not too many marinas that have that kind of a setup and everything. We don't, we don't warehouse the boats or anything like that. That's about all I know about boating and marinas. But it seems like a pretty sweet deal to me. And if Jody says we can raise the rate a little bit, based on her experience, I'm going to defer to her, and I think we should get whatever the market will bear on it. Marv?
Lynn, I know we've got money in the budget to upgrade the marina, but I'm sure there's some boats over there that have 50-foot or 50 amp connections to power. And the other thing, some of them utilize water. Some boats can actually use potable water to cool the air conditionings in the boat. So I don't know if we monitor all that, I've never looked at it. But I just wonder what our actual utility costs are there, you know, what they are for the marina.
Well, the, the, the budget number is pretty close to what it costs annually. I can tell you that, where is it? We don't have it broke out by, by each slip. So we would have to, the only way to do that technically would be to, to make each slip have its own meter and each slip have its own water meter. And there are some marinas that do that. And then there's other marinas that have a flat utility fee like Jody said. So that cost is kind of intermixed with the lighting, the parking, and all of that lighting that's there also. So.
Well, the, the point is, if somebody leaves their water run, I mean, we're paying for it. If somebody has their boat, you know, battery chargers and air conditioning systems running on the city's power, it'd be nice to know who's doing what and charge them accordingly.
Well, I don't, other than metering them separately, I don't think you're, you know, which would be a, a pretty large expense to convert all that. I don't think you're. I think Jody's philosophy or direction on it is much more palatable to just make it an average fee.
Jody, I have you next, and then Dave Gaddis. And Robin, does the person with you want to speak? Just kidding, Jody, you're next, and Dave.
Dave, you go, because my phones, my house phone's ringing, no one ever calls me on that. So I'm probably going to get a message here in a minute, so you go and then I'll take it.
Well, basically, what I was going to say is rather than metering these, like the electricity and the water, obviously, water is something that everyone should be provided as part of that because you have to flush these boats out every time you use them. If you have a boat that, you know, requires, it's not a full-time in-water boat. But as far as electricity goes, that should be a premium. And if nothing else, there should be a way to turn it off and on and lock it. So if you want electricity, you actually pay for that service and it's tacked onto your bill. It's just an additional fee that goes right along with your slip rental.
You finished, Dave? Yeah, so that was, my thought was just along those lines is one, it would be too cost prohibitive to have meter set on every pedestal out there. So every boat slip has a pedestal with power and water available. So I don't know, I don't know that there's a fair way to handle it. I can guarantee you that every boat that's in those slips, when they go out, they come back in and they use water, rather, whether it's for flushing engines or washing the salt off or, you know, what have you. That's just happens at every marina, every, you know, I can tell you we do it at our house. So that's expected. And I think even the smaller vessels probably have a battery charger that they're plugging into, even if they're not plugging in for AC and those sorts of things. I don't know how many are in-water boats and what they use, that type of use is. That's why I said, would it be, it's not fair, you know, just say, oh, here's the total expense of $7,500 and, you know, the fee would be, we wanted to break even, everyone would have to pay like $32 a month. So to kind of offset some of those costs, I'm not saying that we want to balance the budget, but I'm just, you know, suggesting that. And then I do have a question for you, Lynn, is I'm looking at this roster of each slip and I noticed we've got property owner, we've got non-resident, and we have resident. So what are the differences?
Well, a property owner is someone that owns a property here, but they may not live here. The resident is someone that physically lives here. And then the non-resident is someone that has no connection with the city whatsoever.
So are you telling me that we only have one resident property owner and the rest of the property owners don't live here and they're using?
Well.
I'm kind of confused, I think.
Patty may be able to answer that question better.
Maybe the resident is a renter or something.
Yeah, yeah, that could be. But they're property owners. And Patty takes care of this right now and we're in the, going to transition that. Actually, we're going to transition it to Kyle, which we've been in discussion with. And so, you know, I think your proposal is reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's very reasonable. I know that we pay for the streetlights out there, but, you know, and again, the only people that benefit from those streetlights along the dockage is, are the residents who have their boats in the marina. None of us can go walk the bulkhead down there like we used to be able to because it's gated and locked and, you know, so every other resident in the city cannot use, can't go take a stroll down the dock. So there's some, you know, I just, they've got a great, they've got a great benefit to have those slips available to them.
So what is the council's thought on that?
I like what Jody had to say, if you can work out some numbers behind it. I think it's a very reasonable proposal without going to separate metering, which sounds like it will be very expensive.
Any other feedback?
I agree with Jody, I like her idea.
I also agree with Jody.
Glenn?
Yeah, you know, I just want to make sure we understand the hidden costs. It's not just a matter of dividing up the electricity bill by the number of slips and charging them. I mean, there's a carrying cost for the money, there's an administrative fee for managing billing, that sort of stuff. So understand what those hidden costs are and charge them appropriately. I mean, it's not just a simple matter of dividing the electricity bill by the number of slips or the lighting costs, that sort of thing. There should be a premium for managing that sort of thing, it's a nice facility.
And there's going to be a big difference between a boat sitting there on trickle charge versus a boat sitting there with humans in it running an air conditioner.
Yeah, and part of the, part of our problem, you know, if we go down to try to compare rates, and we've done that many times, rate comparison, yes, ours has got security fencing around it. I will say that most marinas don't even have that. Most marinas, you can walk out on any, you know, if you go to Dunedin to the municipal dock or to Clearwater to the municipal dock, there's no gate that stops you from going out onto that thing. So that is a benefit for the, for the slip renters. So, and sharing in some of that cost may be the simplest way to go back. What is that going to cost a person that has a, we'll just say 30-foot boat, it's costing them $210 because that's our minimum. So it would be an increase of about 20 bucks a month, so $240 over the year.
Dave? And Marv?
I do see that, you know, we have a few non-residents. I'm just curious, do we have residents that are in line waiting for an opening?
Yeah, well, how it works, you put your name on the list and what happens is when a slip comes open, we go to the resident list first. If we have no residents that want to slip, because people will put their name on the list and, you know, it could be on there for six months or a year and then they say, no, I don't want that slip anymore. So then we go to the next person. So that's how a non-resident ends up there.
Oh, Marv, I think you were next.
Yeah, Lynn, a question I have, or not a question, but they do make some cheap meters, inline meters that can be put on, maybe down the road if, you know, just try one and just see what the usage is on some of these larger boats. The ones that have the water connected all the time, which could be for air conditioning or whatever. And, you know, you've got some boats maybe have 25 to 50-gallon holding tanks in there for wastewater and freshwater for their sinks or toilets or whatever else you have here. So it may be more than what we imagine as far as water.
Yeah. Okay. I'll do a little more on that and kind of give you some feedback on that at the work session actually in August, if that's okay.
Great, thanks. Thank you, Jody, for raising that one, that's a good idea. Does anybody else have anything else on the budget discussion before we call it? We have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned and we'll immediately start the next one. I don't have this printed out, so this is, Patty, are you ready to go or do you have to separate tapes or anything like that?
No, we're going to run it continually.
Especially, sorry, I have to talk this way because I got my other computer where this is on. Special City Council Meeting, City of Bel Air Beach. It was set to start right after the beginning, the end of this other meeting. My screen just blacked out. It's 7:58, so I'm calling that meeting to order. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Robin Ockley.
Here.
Councilmember Mark Bean.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Councilmember Jody Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Rita Swol.
Here.
Vice Mayor Glenn Gun.
Here.
Mayor Joseph Manzo.
Here.
And City Manager Lynn Reeves.
Here.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We've got two items on here, the first item, both set by the city manager. First is consideration of setting the tentative millage rate for 2020 through 21. City Manager?
Yes, the staff is recommending that we set the millage rate at the current millage rate of 2.0394. This is not the final millage rate, but setting this, we cannot go any higher than this when we come to the budget hearing in September. So I'm recommended that we stay status quo. That's an increase of about 4.28% from the rollback rate. And that will bring about $59,000 revenue into the budget for next year. So I'm recommending that we set the tentative millage rate at 2.0394.
Which, for the record, that's been that way for like six or seven years, correct, Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Okay. But again, we would be looking at an increase in revenue due to the approximate, almost 5% increase that we have in our property values this year, thanks to the appreciation.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. We have any discussion, Counsel, on that? And again, this was the, and I just want to clarify this, I know there's two people listening in. This is not a final rate, this is the maximum rate we can go. It is possible that this rate can be lowered, you know, through further discussions. Lynn has going to give us some more information, there's still more discussion to go. There's going to be two public hearings on this budget also. So depending on the feedback we get, anything can happen to this, but what can't happen is that that rate will not go higher, this is the cap.
I'm going to agree with City Manager Reeves' recommendation that we stay with what we're at, at the 2.0394.
Anyone else? Jody?
You know, we talked about this last budget season and I still feel strongly about it. I'm more leaning towards, and, you know, I know this isn't, this isn't the final decision, but I like the idea of a rollback and keeping everyone's taxes where they are. And I, you know, I know it's not a huge number, I think we're talking about roughly $50,000, but I, you know, I think that we can find $50,000 somewhere in the budget. So that's just my two cents.
Jody, I agreed with you last year, I'm going to agree with you again this year. I ran on a no new taxes thing, I know it's difficult, I know the police go up every year. Unfortunately, we have, you know, that's just the cost of living. And I know that we, you know, sometimes garbage goes up every year. I think we did a good job at cost containment last year, but I'm in favor of keeping it at the rollback. I will vote to cap this tonight, but that does not mean I'm going to support the passage of this when we get to the actual item. In fact, if it has an increase, I'm most likely going to, well, I'll probably join you, Jody, but I'm not, I didn't vote for it last year and I just can't do that. I think we have to be very vigilant about coming up with new sources of revenue if our costs go higher. You just gave one tonight that's been overlooked for many, many years. And there's probably others out there if we put our thinking caps on, so that's, I agree with you 100% on it. Marv?
I think we did a great job overall last year, staff did a good job. We've saved money all the way around and we're very diligent looking at every possible angle. The thing that worries me a little bit is states' loss of revenue, and that may affect us a little bit. And by staying where we're at, I think we just might break even at the end of the year. That's what I'm thinking. Hate to say it, but I think our conditions here in the state of Florida and the loss of revenue throughout from travel and whatever else is going to hurt us a little bit. So I'm thinking of just leaving it where it is for now.
Dave?
I agree with Lynn's recommendation. I think that between the virus, past, present, and future, we have not yet seen what's going to happen. And I think honestly, we're probably better off keeping it without the rollback. And let's see where things fall. Maybe next year will be better and we can go back to the rollback rate. But I just think right now it's too risky. And the last thing we need is to be in a position of where we cannot afford to run the city in the proper manner.
Any other council comments before I open it up to the citizens? We do have to hear from citizens on this.
Mayor, Mr. Lusk, can you see Mr. Lusk has his hand raised?
I just see that it's muted, so if they will, if they can be unmuted and if they had, well, see, Mr. Alex has dropped off, so now I have Bill Lusk unmuted. Mr. Lusk, if you was to speak, the floor is yours.
Thank you, is it out of line to go backwards to what you had adjourned on before in regards to the marina?
Yeah, this is, well, this is, I mean, maybe not. It's, this is on the adoption of the budget rate, so to the effect that it might affect the budget rate, go ahead and speak.
Nothing to add on the budget rate, I had my hand raised, it was ignored, and just for the record, a couple of comments on the marina.
Okay, I don't have a picture of you and I can't see when you're raising your hand, but just, you know what? I want to hear the comment, and if Counsel doesn't mind, just dispensing with the rules for a second, I want to hear what Mr. Lusk had to say. Everybody's giving me a thumbs, I see thumbs up, so go ahead, Mr. Lusk. I can't see you, so I don't know what you're doing.
It's no big deal, thank you. You know, I do it every year, I've been down there a long time and I'll help a little bit. I'll do another study to help everybody with competitiveness, that's one side of the variable. As far as gates, yes, you can go down to Clearwater yourself, you can go to Dunedin, you can see in Gulfport, you can go to St. Pete, they are all locked, they are lit. But one big difference, and I think things have changed within the last year, is that we have a minimum of 30 feet. And I don't want to take up too much time because you're moving along and I don't want to, but I'll address this little different remote. The new study, there are a lot of residents that don't have 30-foot boats, but we're paying 30-foot rates. There are a lot of residents that don't use electric, that don't run 24/7 electric to their boat, or for that matter, even charge. So just some consideration for open-mindedness. I don't think anyone on Counsel is currently tied to the marina or maybe even not a boater. But I'd be happy to provide what is current in regards to competitive rates and address this discussion. I'll take your guidance, how you want me to do it.
If Counsel is okay with that, I'd like it, Mr. Lusk, if you could just route that through Lynn Reeves, then he could pass it on, or Patty Gentry, they could pass it on to us, that would be fantastic, very much appreciated.
Thank you, another opportunity to speak when you discuss it again would be great too, sorry to interrupt your flow there.
No, it's okay, thank you. Do we have no other citizen comments, correct?
No, there's no one out.
Okay, then I'm going to come back to Counsel. What I'm going to need is, because we had a consideration, we just discussed it, Lynn has made a proposal now that we stick basically with the millage rate. This is our cap and it's 2.0394. So if we could get a motion a second, then we'll open it up for final, for a discussion here. We'll run through it real quickly and then we can vote on this because we're going to, we have to approve that tonight, correct, Mr. Reeves?
Yes, correct.
Okay, okay, so do I have a motion? Okay, and the motion, just to clarify, is to adopt the city manager's recommendation of a 2.0394 millage rate cap, that's our preliminary millage to be voted on after the public sessions. We're all in agreement with that, right?
It's the tentative millage rate.
Tensive millage rate, that's better said, yes, thank you. Does anybody need to discuss any further?
I'm just curious, who seconded it?
Patty?
We both at the same time, I couldn't tell.
Who, who motion? Dave Gaddis?
Mark did at the same time.
Marv seconded, so Dave Gaddis and Marv.
Thank you.
Okay, and then no other council comments, no other citizen comments, right, Mr. Lusk? You're good?
I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, back to council. Dave Gaddis, last word.
Just like I said, I think we should trust Lynn and with everything that's going on. We don't want to paralyze ourselves with another lockdown.
So before the council is the motion to adopt a two point zero three nine four tentative millage rate for this upcoming year. Patty Gentry, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gaddis.
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Swope.
Aye.
Councilmember Aki.
Aye.
Councilmember Bean.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn.
Aye.
Mayor Manzo.
Aye, so it passes seven to zero. The tentative millage rate is two point zero three nine four. City manager, please factor that into all your calculations for the budget.
Yes.
Thank you. So move to item number two. Again, sorry for turning sideways here. Authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for stormwater rate category development through Pinellas County Utilities and Budget Amendment Approval. The description is to approve the agreement with Pinellas County, which we were provided. Do I have a motion first?
I'm moved.
That's Marv Bean making the motion and a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Gaddis. Marv Bean?
No, I open it up. Mayor, you can carry it from here. We've discussed it many times and I'm fine with it.
Do we want to defer to Lynn just for his explanation of this? Probably a good idea.
Okay. Mayor and consul, this is part of the implementing the stormwater rate fee. The county has a vendor that has redone their software. So this cost originally was going to be twenty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. I did go back to them and questioned the cost and. In discussions and through a couple of emails, we got the cost reduced to sixteen thousand, to six hundred and twenty-five dollars. I'm recommending approval of this. This is so we can establish, so they can establish. The software program to start collecting these fees. And if the council approves it, I will give them the go-ahead in the morning to move this forward. So everything moves forward for the stormwater rate. This is a one-time fee. It's not. Going to be charged every year annually.
Lynn, was that sixteen thousand six, did you say?
Sixteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Okay.
And I, I sent you the updated agreement. I also provided you the original email, which was, as I said, was twenty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. And I'm glad we went back to them and said, hey, come on here, cut us some slack. So Pinellas County is, is going to do. Some of the testing for us that they have to do to make sure it works when they do the billing process.
Lynn, I have only one question, and that's a great job of cost cutting there. Do you have any other choice in this or are they basically our sole source for this?
Yeah, they're, they're the sole source and this is, this is their vendor. So. They're the ones that do the billing for us.
Any other comments or questions? I'll open it up to the public. Mr. Lusk?
All set. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Back to the council with last word by Marv Bean.
No, I'm, I'm good with it. I know that Lynn did go back to the county and reduce the fees. Very happy about that. Thanks, Lynn. And hey, we've got to move forward on this. It'll help us in the end.
Thanks for the good negotiation, Lynn. Ready to take it to vote? Okay, so what we're here to do now is to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for stormwater rate category development through Pinellas County Utilities and Budget Amendment Approval. He just told us that the cost is a one-time fee of sixteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars payable to the county. That's basically our sole source provider of this. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Swope.
Aye.
Councilmember Aki.
Aye.
Councilmember Bean.
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn.
Aye.
Mayor Manzo.
Aye, so it passes seven to zero. City manager, if you would, please, as soon as possible. You said tomorrow morning, but whenever you can get to it, let them know that you've got the okay. Sign whatever's necessary. If I need to sign something, just get it to me and I certainly will do that for you. And let's proceed with it.
Thank you, Mayor and consul. And I want to thank you for all your support through this budget process and also thank the staff. Kyle, Laura, Patty for helping put this together and the, the financial consultant, Andy and Heather. I think they did a great job in putting this budget that's a little more streamlined than we've seen in the past. And I appreciate all your input. And we'll make the edits and. I'll get back to you at the, the work session in. August.
Lynn, maybe it's, you know, that we, the newer council members have two years' experience and the, and the senior ones have three, but this seemed to be a very smooth process this year. And, and I think it was much more streamlined and it shows a lot of hard work from you and everybody who's, you know, associated with this. So. Kudos to everyone involved with this. I think it's a better budget. It's much more easily understood and certainly by the public it'll be easier understood. So anytime we're doing that, we're effectively communicating. So excellent job.
Thank you.
Thanks. With that, folks, that's all that's on our agenda. So we can move for an adjournment at this point in time. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
And a sec, I think we had a motion and a second there. We have a second, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our next meeting is the next council meeting, correct, Mr. Reeves?
Yes, August third. At this point, we have not. Heard from the governor that he's extending beyond August first. Once we do, then we'll figure out which way we're going.
Yeah, with record, with record deaths and, and cases, my bet is if anybody wants to bet a drink, that he will extend it.
Yeah, I guess, I'm guessing he will, but you know, it seems like he's always waiting till the last minute.
That he will do. Last time he did it, we waited till the night before. So, but we're ready to go either way. This, I think, worked out well today. Dave, again, thank you for jumping in and making that quick trip down there to get it all working. This worked great after we got it done. So with that, we're adjourned, everyone, and thank you and be safe and have a good weekend and a good week. And we'll see you on August third.
Thank you.
All right, stay safe, stay healthy.
Thanks, you too, Marv. Bye-bye.
Bye.